Rowco, please.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mr. Mohan Patel? Ms. Peng?
Here.
Ms. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen? Ms. Podolsky?
Here.
Ms. Matiker?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Mr. Beryl Patel?
Here.
Seven present.
Opening statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to tell the meetings of public bodies on which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Edson Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted on the Board of Education Administrator Offices. Copies of the notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 5, 2021. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. So today we have a presentation of esports. So first, right, Dr. Brigant?
I think it's a video presentation. Mr. Barker, you can set that up. If the board members would step down, because I think we're going to pull the screen down. As the board members are returning to their seats, I'll just say a few words. You know, we wanted to show the esports arena with some students in it. Obviously, we can't all walk down there at this time of night and have children in there. But we're really excited about beginning that process, and we had a ribbon cutting the last week in November, and it was great to see the children in there and actively engaged in those activities. And at that time, we were informed that the club had over 500 students that were interested in it. So we'll see how it goes. We'll see how the year progresses. And while some of us look at that and we see children playing games and things like that, there's also a great deal of things that they're doing regarding strategy, preparation, and competition that isn't immediately evident in those videos. So we'll continue to report out to the board. Thought it'd be nice to see children in there and maybe at a future meeting, have the children come and, you know, share their thoughts and their perspective on how well it's going. Thank you, Mr. Board President.
Yeah, I just want to add a couple on top of that, because I went to the ribbon cutting ceremony, and toward the end of the room, there was some stuff was not completed. Today, I just saw they completed the broadcasting. And you can see the excitement of the students. They're not only just playing this, they're also other things like marketing and promotions. They designed their own T-shirt with their own logos. They're selling these T-shirts and then to the students. So I hope that, you know, this is going to be a success and they'll win some big competitions.
Agreed. Thank you.
So next up, we have Mr. Benedict is going to talk to us about the transportation.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to update every board in the community regarding the bus tracking system. It is operational. What we've done is we've piloted it right now at four schools, two elementary, one middle, and one high school. Approximately 88 students have cards been sent out. What it allows us to do is not only track the buses using the GPS systems onboard, but the information feeds back, and the students who have scanned onto the bus can also be seen through the student scan activity. This information then becomes available through the MyStop app, which the parents can download. We've sent out instructions to the parents and to the building administrators on the usage of it. Once they download the app, they'll be able to see where their student's bus is in proximity to the actual stop. If the student is scanned onto the bus, the bus is going to be late. And then using the e-link system, they can actually determine what their student's accommodations are on the bus as well. So that is functional. We've sent out all the communication. Now we want to wait for the feedback coming back with respect to parent usage. We'll send out a brief survey to parents in a week or so, once we come back from the break, to see if they're actually using it and how kind of feedback we have on it, and as well as the buildings. So all of our principals, assistant principals, head secretaries have access, and the parents. Any questions?
Any, anyone? Yes, Shivi.
You said 88 students have those cards?
Yes, approximately 88 were distributed through the buildings. We sent the passes to the building for the principals and staff to distribute, and then the e-communication went out to the parents on how to download the app, frequently ask questions and stuff like that. We, at first, we've sent it just to those parents who received the cards. Our buses are the only buses that you can track with the system. We transport on a daily basis approximately 1,400 students using our buses. So the next step is we'll send all the parents who could potentially be on a bus, how to download the app. So they may not see a scan on their student, but they would still get the bus information. If they want to opt into getting alerts or notifications, they can do that as well. That's a personal decision.
And which schools have these been piloted in?
Which schools?
Yeah.
It's Washington, Lindonaught, John Adams, and Edison High.
Okay.
Okay.
And do we have the potential to put these on the buses that we contract with, or just our own buses?
This is, right now, it's only on our buses.
I mean, in the future?
In order to put it on the contractor buses, it has to be something that was included in the contract that was set up in the bid process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Member, any questions? I'm just very excited to hear that. It's, you know, I've been asking this for two and a half years now. So it's operational, or it's working operational the next semester?
It's, no, it's operational now. I spot-checked one of the routes this morning.
Okay.
There were four students that I saw scan activity on. I just touched base with Mr. Ross before we came in. He even asked about athletics for it. So it's one of those things where we could do that down the road.
Okay, so the app can track where the bu, when is the bus coming, you know, where the bus it is, and the kids scan it in, the parents will know the kids got on the bus. When they get off the bus, they can also know that, right?
Correct. They touch the card to the scanning device, it emits an audible sound, puts a student on, same thing when they're getting off. So the drivers are also aware to work with the kids, take their time with them and everything. So this way, they get accustomed to it, to just gather the information and the feedback and see how it goes.
So it's on 10 buses right now, right? Is that 10?
Yeah, the scanners are on 10 buses. We've got eight routes that are currently, the car's just been distributed for.
Okay. Thank you.
Board President, I have a quick question.
Yeah, just want to, you know, ask the parents to do us a big favor. For those 88 students that can use this app, please, please provide feedback to us and use the parent portal to provide, not parent portal, I'm sorry. Parent help desk to provide us with any comments or emails, because we want to hear from you so we can improve for the next school year. We have 27 buses, plus we're purchasing another 30, so we're looking at 50 buses. And if we can, if this is going to be successful, it will help a lot with the parents and students when it comes to the transportation services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mo.
You just asked the question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's move on. We have recognitions. We have two board members, Mrs. Conway and Dr. Chen, and today is their last meeting. So we want to recognize them for the contributions they have made to the board for the past three years. And so if you can read the recognition, thank you.
Resolution, whereas Elizabeth Conway during the last three years has served as a member of the Edison Township Board of Education, serving on various committees during her years as a board member, and whereas Elizabeth Conway has earned the admiration and respect of the community, the state, and the students, and whereas Elizabeth Conway has aggressively met all challenges and has continually represented the school district in the best interest of the students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Edison Township Board of Education extends its congratulations to Elizabeth Conway for this outstanding commitment to the Edison Township School District, and that a copy of this resolution be placed in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting on this date, and a copy be presented to Elizabeth Conway with a suitable expression of thanks. Adopted by the Edison Township Board of Education, December 21, 2021. Resolution, whereas Dr. Yuna Chen during the last three years has served as a member of the Edison Township Board of Education, serving on various committees during her years as a board member, and whereas Dr. Yuna Chen has earned the admiration and respect of the community, the state, and the students, and whereas Dr. Yuna Chen has aggressively met all challenges and has continually represented the school district in the best interest of the students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Edison Township Board of Education extends its congratulations to Dr. Yuna Chen for this outstanding commitment to the Edison Township School District, and that a copy of this resolution be placed in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting on this date, and a copy presented to Dr. Yuna Chen with a suitable expression of thanks. Adopted by the Edison Township Board of Education, December 21, 2021.
Thank you. Now we move on. We, right now, we're open for public comments on resolutions only. The resolutions list on the agenda. Any public comments? Please come to the podium. You have six minutes. Thank you. Yes, Brian. Who? Oh, I didn't see, okay.
Susan Campione, ECH for Corton Edison. First off, I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy and safe holiday and New Year, and hopefully things will calm down with all of this crazy variant that's going on. I just wanted to wish Yuna and Elizabeth well. Elizabeth, thank you for always fighting for the teachers and the students and parents, especially with special ed. And I know that we're going to see you in the cheap seats over here and speaking up, and I know you've been doing it for years, and thank you for all that you did, and thank you, Yuna. Have a nice holiday.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Brian.
Sorry, I was looking for the cleaner. But I did want to come up here and congratulate Yuna and Mrs. Conway for serving Edson Public Schools. Ms. Conway, specifically you, I've gotten to know you the last two years, so I want to say your heart was in the right place. It was here for our, I'm sorry I'm not speaking about Mrs. Chen, I just did not know her well. But you, I particularly got to know. Your heart was in the right place. It was here for children, it was here for staff, it was here for the community. I'm honored that I am stepping up there. I hope I could fulfill your shoes, and I just wanted to say, I hope you enjoy what's coming up next. I'm looking forward to seeing you out here, listening to your ideas, and doing what's best for Edson Public Schools. So I wish you the best, I wish Mrs. Chen the best, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody up there, and I know Douglas feels the same. You guys have a phenomenal night, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes. Jerry.
Jerry Campione, Edison Township Education Association, 2 Ethel Road. I just want, on behalf of the association, to thank Dr. Chen and Mrs. Conway for your service to the district and for your commitment to the students. And on a personal level, I have worked with Mrs. Conway as a colleague, I've worked with Mrs. Conway as a board member, but more importantly, I consider Mrs. Conway a friend. So thank you, Elizabeth, for all you've done. You have a seat next to us anytime you wish. Dr. Chen, best of luck to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we move on. The resolutions. First, the personnel report. Can I have a motion on the personnel report?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, Shivi. Mohan and Shivi.
Mr. Beryl Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion is carried.
Thank you. So next up, we have multiple items, administration, all the settlement agreement, the curriculum instruction, and pupil services, the three items. Okay, two, three, four. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Okay. Shannon and Mohan.
Mr. Beryl Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion is carried.
Last, we have the finance, the minutes, Board Secretary Report, and the finance resolution. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Shivi, Mohan and Shivi.
Mr. Beryl Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion is carried.
Okay. Upcoming meetings. The reorganization meeting will be on January 3, and if it's printed on your agenda, it's Education Center, it's not correct, it's in the JP Stevens. January 3, 7 o'clock, JP Stevens, for the reorg meeting. And in January, we're two meetings, caucus meeting, right now, January 20 is also scheduled at JP, and a public meeting on Monday, January 25th, it's also at JP. So January, all the meetings at JP, January 3, 20th, and 25th. Coming up, we have the committee reports. First, Athletic Committee, Mrs. Peng.
Okay. The Athletic Committee has a meeting, had a meeting Thursday, December 2, 12 o'clock at Edson Center. In attendance were me, Jerry Shi, Beryl Patel, and Mohan Patel, via the phone. The committee discussed the status of the fields at Wuzhou Wilson Middle School. I have heard a lot of parents complaining about the fields, it's so uneven and it's kind of dangerous for the kids to play on it. So the committee agreed that the district should get estimates for installing a sprinkler system and having the field seeded. Dr. Brigant will secure these estimates and bring them to the Finance and Facility Committee for review. The committee also asked to get the prices of bollards to stop automobile from gaining access to the field. The committee also requested additional bike racks to be ordered for both high schools. Dr. Brigant informed the committee that the bike racks have already been ordered for both schools. The committee also asked to secure estimates for creating permanent cricket pitches for Thomas Jefferson Middle School, similar to those previously installed in Wuzhou Wilson School. There are areas of the playground at FDR School that needed to be repaired. The district will get this done as soon as possible. Concerns were also revised where children are required to ride the athletic buses to and from athletic events, and this will be looked by Dr. Brigant. Currently, there were no middle school volleyball teams, and this was previously approved, I think, two years ago in the budget. Dr. Brigant will also look at this and report back to the committee. We're really hoping to have volleyball programs in our middle school, not just as a feeder to the high school volleyball team programs, and also the students has been really interested in these volleyball teams from their gym class, so they're really hoping to have, maybe not a team, at least an intermural program, so that they can play in the spring season when the court is actually not used. Concerns were also raised about having middle school basketball tryout on the same days. This would, this was happened this year, actually reduce the trial time for both teams, so we should be able to do this in different times, different days at least. Also, another question was posed by having the current cricket field rolled on a regular basis. Dr. Brigant informed the committee that the district has purchased a roller, and it is used on the pitches when needed. The meetings are adjourned at about 1:00 PM. That's all.
So Dr. Brigant, did you get any updates on the middle school volleyball? We still, do we have it, or?
I have to get back on that, I don't have it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Township Liaison Committee, Mrs. White.
The Township Liaison Committee was held on Tuesday, December 7, at 11:00 AM at the Education Center. In attendance were Councilwoman Joyce ship Freeman, Mayor-elect Council VP Sam Joshi, BOE VP Moeen Patel, BOE Members Virginia White, Superintendent Dr. Bernard Brigant, and Dr. Edward Alderelli, Human Resources Director. In attendance via Zoom were Councilman Najee Patel, and BOE Members Shivi Prasad Matiker and Beryl Patel. Also in attendance via Zoom were Mayor Thomas Lenke, Deputy Fire Chief, Office of Emergency Management Coordinator Andy Toth, Maureen Ruane, Township Business Administrator, Deputy Chief Robert Dudasch, and Sergeant Douglas Turner of Edison Police Department. The committee welcomed everyone to the meeting. We began our meeting with Deputy Chief Toth. He provided a COVID update. Booster shot clinics are scheduled for December 13 for employees. The township is working with FEMA to obtain monies from hurricane, itis, storm damage. Both Chief Toth and Joyce Ship Freeman are working along with Dr. Brigant on a program directed toward high school students that express an interest in becoming either firefighters or policemen. This project has been expanded to include various township departments. This project is being coordinated with school administrators. Deputy Chief Toth stated that he is working with Joyce Ship Freeman on connecting with students. Quite a few students do not have direction on what they want to become. The plan is to create a video for students to view so that they can see what is available to them. The video is expected to be ready for January. Mayor Lenke provided us with an update on Stilton School Project. Mrs. White asked about Recreation Open Space Inventory, Rossi, the status of, for the status of the Stilton property. Maureen Ruane, Township Business Administrator, suggested that we meet with the Green Acres representatives, and if Dr. Brigant gets representatives from the district, she will set up a meeting. Dr. Brigant said he would facilitate the meeting. We will have an update on the status of the Truman Avenue property when Mr. Northgrave returns from vacation. Mrs. Matiker asked if the environmental study was done, when the environmental study was done on the Kilmer property. Maureen said it was done at least 10 years ago. Mrs. Matiker suggested that we contact Dan Michaud, former business administrator, to find information on this study. Dr. Brigant said he would facilitate. Mrs. White asked about the before and after school programs. It was suggested at a previous meeting about the possibility of having high school students volunteer. She spoke with Joyce Furcha from Edison Recreation, who stated that JP Stevens has a program in place already, and it could possibly be expanded to Edison High School students as well. Crossing Guards. Deputy Chief Bob Dudasch and Sergeant Douglas Turner provides us with information regarding the issue of crossing guards. The township is exploring a variety of options, and at present are looking to consolidate a few of the crossing guard locations. They have six or seven applicants in the process of becoming crossing guards. This will have a big impact on improving the situation. The police department is reaching out to the community and continues to make everyone aware of the need for crossing guards. We asked Deputy Chief Dudasch and Sergeant Turner about a concern apparent living on Jackson Avenue ad, about truck traffic during the beginning of the school day and at dismissal. The question was raised as to the possibility of traffic being limited during those hours, especially truck traffic. Deputy Chief Dudasch is aware of these concerns, and they are working on possible solutions. Mayor-elect Joshi said that possible solutions would be explored, including Little Avenue. Mrs. White also mentioned concerns with traffic patterns at JP Stevens. Mrs. Matiker spoke of the poor shape of Floyd Road, and the road and sidewalk are in need of repair. Deputy Chief Dudasch spoke of the success of police intervention, requiring people to make a right turn only when exiting the JP Stevens campus to increase the traffic flow, and this made a significant improvement. Mrs. Matiker said that the problem still exists, and the way traffic is managed in the parking lot causes some of the congestion. Mr. Moeen Patel suggested that Floyd Street be open to normal traffic, and Deputy Chief Dudasch will look into these options and explore all suggestions. Additionally, Mrs. Matiker suggested creating designated bike lanes for students. Deputy Chief Dudasch will share this information with the Engineering Department. Sergeant Turner will work with us to take a look at what can be done on site to enhance the traffic flow at JP Stevens. Mrs. White shared a rough estimate for the proposed Stilton School Project. The cost is roughly 14 to 16 million. We are still waiting for one more estimate. The issue of overcrowding is a priority in the district. With that being said, Mayor-elect Joshi stressed that Mayor Lenke has been very helpful with the transition, and that Mayor-elect Joshi is prioritizing the schools on his agenda. He promised to allocate 2 million for a new bond for a referendum. Edison Arts Society, Gloria Ditman provided the committee with an update. There is a new exhibit at the municipal building for those who have the opportunity to visit there. The gazebo in Papiani Park remains a work in progress. The Arts Society is planning banners honoring hometown heroes. The Arts Society will provide funding for this project. The next meeting for the Township Board of Ed Liaison Committee is scheduled for February 8 at 11:00 AM at the Education Center. Respectfully submitted, Virginia White. But Jerry, can I just add a little bit to that?
Yes.
That meeting was on December 7, and I believe it was last week, maybe, you know, or the end of the week before that Sergeant Turner, Deputy Chief Dudasch, Dr. Brigant... Bragan, and I think Pat Cassane were all at J. P. Stevens to view, you know, on the spot at, you know, the beginning of the school day, the actual traffic situation. So, you know, it's not something that's falling through the cracks, it's something that they're moving forward with, so, you know, I was really happy to hear that. And, you know, Dr. Bragan, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but, you know, they will look into it and do something.
Yeah, just on that, we were there for, and, you know, kudos to the Chief, Deputy Chief, as well as Sergeant Turner for doing that. We were there for over an hour, and then we met for about a half hour afterwards to debrief. They're gonna come up with a plan, we have some ideas that we think could help make it go a little bit more seamless and maybe ease the traffic congestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh Ginny, on the Stelton School Project, it said um you have gotten an estimate uh that it's roughly fourteen to sixteen million dollars. Did you get something in writing and from whom?
No, this is uh actually from, we have two of, you know, um
Architects.
Architects that are going, you know, that are supposed to give us, you know, the ballpark estimates. One is DMR, that's where this one came from. The other one is USA, that's the one we have been waiting on, and that's the one I'm really looking forward to because he's looked at the property multiple times. You know, but our big problem with Stelton School, or the Stelton School Project, is the surrounding property, you know, because that is part of Rossi. And that's the, you know, we have to deal with that issue as well, but those are just ballparks and uh
So they haven't, DMR hasn't given you anything in writing?
Nothing in writing, not as yet.
Now, the, just want to add, uh, that uh price figure is just to remodel, uh refurbish the building as is a two-story building. Uh, if we want to add a third and fourth floor, the the price tag will be different. Anyone else? Okay, sorry, I tried to turn around. All right, so we have uh a couple committees that they were not able to get the the report uh on the agenda, although it was submitted uh to Judy, but yeah, anyone want to, yeah, you want to, yeah, finance facility?
Sure. For finance and facility, there's not too much to add, uh, other than what uh uh Ms. Shannon already added. Uh, in regards to the bollards, basically, Mr. Calibus reviewed the estimates received for installing bollards or a fence at Woodrow Wilson, uh, to restrict cars from entering the rear of the property to access the fields. So, uh, he's got, he's gotten estimates for removable bollards, fencing with a gate, and we said to go back and get some more prices because they were a little too high, so sixty-five hundred for a bollard and forty-two hundred for gates. Uh, we also discussed that Mr. Calibus reviewed the estimates received for improvements at the fields at Woodrow Wilson, since we talked about the conditions of them before. So, he got an estimate for sprinklers and seeding, uh, but we said to go back and get more estimates uh in regards to sprinklers and seeding, sprinklers alone and seeding alone, so this way we get a better idea as to what the cost would be regarding the whole field. Uh, the other aspect we talked about was basically for TJMS, uh, for a estimate for creating a permanent cricket pitch. Uh, the quote came back at forty-eight thousand five hundred. We said it was a little too high, so to go back and try to get a few more quotes, so we're basically looking forward to more quotes, more quotes and more quotes. Uh, and other than that, basically, it's, uh, we asked about the update on the Lincoln Edition, and we were informed, the committee that is, it's still on the schedule for all classrooms to open on by September twenty twenty-two, with the exception of the prefabricated steel building, which is the gym, due in December twenty twenty-two. And that was for finance facilities, which was on Wednesday, December the eighth, twenty twenty-one. In attendance was Dr. Bragan, Dr. Alderelli, Ann Clark, Yuna Chen, Dr. Chen, sorry, uh, myself, Jerry Shi, Elizabeth Conway, and Will Calibus. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
How many quotes did we receive for the cricket pitches?
We only received one, so we're going out for a bid, uh, uh, to to get more.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Any other questions?
Mr. Shi?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah.
Uh Judy Cox had contacted me, because I didn't get to read the Middlesex County minutes last month.
Yes, go ahead, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ready for them, and I'll pass copies.
Yeah.
Because she didn't get, we didn't get the copies to go out. Okay, the Middlesex County School Boards Association meeting was held, county meeting was held on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Um, Lucille Bloom, President of the Middlesex County School Boards Association, opened the meeting and led the flag salute. In attendance, from the Edison Board of Ed, in person, Carol Podofsky and Elizabeth Conway, and Dinner Was Lovely, and virtual, Jerry Shi and Mohin Patel. Um, information for newly elected Board of Ed members was discussed, um, to work with Board of Education Secretary to complete their registration and training. There is a criminal background checks and fingerprints that need to be submitted within thirty days of certification of election results. In-person training is being held on the weekends of February fourth to sixth or March fourth to sixth. The Friday or first day session of both dates is a virtual evening session, with Saturday and Sunday being in person. Bruce Young gave greetings from the new, the National School Boards Association Off- New Jersey School Board Association Officers. Um, Joyce Mata gave a Board of Directors update, and Christopher Jones gave a virtual legislative update to the people in attendance. An update from the field, Mary Ann Friedman recommended the book Fundamentals of School Board Membership from the New Jersey School Boards Association. It is good for new and not-so-new members. There was a presentation by Bert Mandelbaum, M. D., on changing school start times for the health and education of adolescents. It was promoting better health and educational outcomes for students. This is a hot topic for schools throughout our area, and we actually discussed it at last month's meeting here, those of us who had been there, we just didn't get the minutes in there. And respectfully submitted, Carol Podofsky.
Thank you very much, Carol. Uh Shannon, you wanna talk about the CTC?
Yeah. So the Curriculum and Technology Committee has a meeting um last Thursday. The mini-meetings has been submitted, so uh board members will see it a little bit later. In attendance is um myself, Yuna Chen, Mohin Patel, Shivi Prasad Mattiker, Baninda Mahabhir, Gil Polikowski, and Dr. Bragan. Several items were discussed. High school quarterly will be administered for marking period two. The quarterly have been adjusted to only include content taught in marking period one and two of this year. Several middle school science classes will be piloting a new science textbook for marking period three. Teachers will receive professional development and training prior to the pilot. Middle school science book has been requested by the board for several years, so we're really excited to have this book in, a pilot book, because since, right now, we don't have a real textbook, it's kind of homegrown material. So, the board, we're, we're really looking forward to this book. In response to the middle school social study class survey that was brought up during last public meeting, the committee also, and also in response to the concerns that raised by parents during the past few years, especially election year, the committee also discussed about the importance of keeping politics out of our classrooms. Contents and teaching materials should be impartial and neutral and following the curriculum in place. We need to teach the students how to think and not what to think. Also discussed was issues about late grading on tests and quizzes. Some students did not even, did not get their test or quiz graded four to six weeks after the test took places, therefore did not know that they, if they're lagging behind until it's kind of late and became very hard to catch up. The administration assured the committee that Genesis should be updated at least once a week, and test grades should be entered usually within two weeks. There is also a new proposal to move the middle school word languages classes and electives from A. B. schedule to a semester schedule. The proposal is for next school year, and it's still an ongoing discussion. Since last Thursday, we have heard some concerns from our teachers, and we will make sure that all opinions are heard and discussed before a decision is made. The meeting lasted about an hour and adjourned at one P. M. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just want to reiterate on the issue about grading and timing, and we heard a lot of um, you know, concerns from parents uh when it comes to grading and, you know, see the um, the kids, the kids seeing the result, and sometimes, you know, you have two tests and you have a quiz, and the, the, you know, test score is not even um graded, but the quiz uh happened, and the kids end up making exactly the same mistakes as what they did with the other, the, um, the things before. So, we're hoping that moving forward, we'll get a timely update on that.
Yeah, we could look into that, and and I'm sure it's only a couple instances. Most of our teachers are really good with that, getting the grades in on time, because it's, the feedback's important for the students, right? If they have an issue with their performance, to get that feedback, adjust the performance so they could correct it for, you know, the next exam, next quiz, or their next test. I'm pretty sure it's contained, the language somewhat is contained in our grading policy. I think it's twenty-six twenty-four. It's on the website that says something about keeping um the students informed of their progress throughout the semester. So we'll follow up with that, and we we do think it's really important. If we don't have that feedback, we can't really adjust our performance to improve, so thank you. And again, I'm sure it's only a few, a few instances, a few teachers.
Yes, very, yeah, limited.
And we'll, we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry, I have a question for Shannon.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Uh Shannon, the, the science uh program, uh, could you remind me with the grades that are involved in these new textbooks?
I think it's all grades, you middle school.
Middle school grades?
Middle school grades, yeah.
And it's a pilot, and out of the number of teachers involved in the pilot, what's the percentage of teachers that have actually had access to the new program to give their input?
Um, I don't know the detail of that numbers, maybe, I think Gil would know.
We can get that information. I, I know it's, it didn't start yet. I believe it's starting in the third marking period, and it's across all of our middle schools, across a variety of grade levels. I'll get that information, I don't want to get it wrong, so we'll email that to the full board tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because the only thing I'm worried about is sometimes the number of teachers that are involved in a pilot doesn't really represent our stool, our school district properly, so we need to make sure that no matter what pilot or what we're speaking of regarding the curriculum, we're getting uh enough feedback from enough teachers, because they're the ones that are going to be using the curriculum and the programs. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I think they just started it, so, uh, they haven't even started, they were just brought up uh at the last meeting, and we usually would get more details uh deeper, you know, later on, like for the elementary school pilot, we usually get all the details, how many teachers, which schools, and we, I'm sure we will get that later on.
Because I can remember a number of years ago, there was a, um, the Language Arts Program. It was a very small percentage of teachers, and then we expanded to ensure that it was the program we indeed wanted, so I just want to make sure that teachers are using the program, they should have a decent say on how they feel. They're not making decisions, but at least we're hearing how they feel about the programs. Thank you.
Can I say that, you know, I'm confident in our administrative team, as well as the Curriculum and Technology Committee, that they will ensure that there's a representative sample that are included in that survey. Thank you, pilot program, I mean. Thank you.
Can I just add something?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, one thing that I did ask was where these books were piloted, and the books were being piloted um in, I believe, all the middle schools, so north end as well as south end. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Anybody else? Okay. Now we are open for board member comments, so uh we're gonna go from the top. Uh, Mrs. White, any comments?
Okay. Um, I went to the tree lighting ceremony at Clara Barton, and it was beautiful, thanks in part to the Edison High School Brass Ensemble under the direction of Mark DiNicolò and Joe Ciapina, and the Herbert Hoover Middle School Choir, under the direction of Mark Conley. These two very talented groups helped make this event outstanding. It was truly a nice thing, you know, if anybody was able to go see it. Then I also attended the Edison High School Band Concert on December sixth. They were, they were just magnificent. This was, for some of the ninth graders, this was the very first time that these band members were able to play together. And due to COVID, everything's been either virtual or separate, so this, this was the first time they were able to come together, and they were just great. And then for the town, traditionally, around Christmas time, they have a Santa drive-by, and it's the EMS squads and the First Aid Squad Number One, and you know, they just, it's usually down in the south end of town, I don't believe they do it in the north end, but they definitely did it here. It's a tradition, and they kept up with it, and I'd just like to thank all of those people who participated, you know, and continued to keep, you know, keep the tradition going. Uh, it was great for the children, and us older folks really liked it too, it was a nice thing, very seasonal. And then lastly, for Elizabeth and Dr. Chen, it's been my honor to serve with both of you this year. The children of Edison are always first and foremost in your hearts and minds, I know that, and I know neither one of you will be a stranger, and you're gonna keep up with us, you'll never be far away, and I just want to thank you so much for your service. That's it.
Okay, Carol?
Okay. I would like, also like to personally thank Dr. Chen for her service to our district for the past three years. After serving for just two years, myself, in the current COVID pandemic, I know how challenging every month, week, day, and hour can be, serving on the Board of Education for a school district the size of Edison. The job has been challenging and demanding for an unpaid position, and I am very grateful to Dr. Chen for giving her time for the good of all the children of Edison. Thank you, Yuna. I am glad that I had the opportunity to work with you these two years, and thank you again for giving your time and effort to help our schools remain nothing less than excellent. Thank you, Dr. Chen.
Thank you.
Now, this one's a little harder for me. I've known Elizabeth Conway for over thirty years. I know her solely through working with her in other volunteer roles focused on our local schools and students. When we met, Edison did not even have an elected Board of Education. Times have changed here in Edison, and there have been many challenges facing our town, our schools, our parents, our boards of education, but especially our students and their families. Throughout these years, Elizabeth Conway has been at these meetings whenever possible to make a positive difference in our schools, where we have both served as teachers. She has worked very hard for many years trying to bring back the excellence that Edison has long taken pride in. Like myself, Mrs. Conway ran for the Board of Education as soon as she was allowed after retiring from teaching in the district. Since then, she has given one hundred percent and more to help guide our district through the many challenges it has faced. She will be missed, and not just by me, but I know she won't be a stranger. Thank you, Mrs. Conway.
Thank you. Mrs. Conway?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Shi. Uh, I had the um pleasure, and I will never give up my pleasures, of visiting the J. P. Stevens Farm Stand, walking in, talking to the students that I had many years ago, talking to teachers that I have been colleagues with for many years. It's such a fabulous atmosphere going on over there, and I praise the program for now and may go on forever, and I thank Dr. Tuwi for enhancing the program, and I thank everyone that's involved in the program. Thank you.
Dr. Chen?
Hi, um, first, um, I'll thank the Edison residents for electing me to be on this position three years ago, and I'm honored to be a board member of this great school district. Uh, so for, for me, the, the three years of um being on the board is a process of learning. I learned how the school functions, and I learned that um every small progress is um the teamwork of a lot of great people, like our board members, our superintendent, and our staff and educators. Um, they, they are all great people, they work together to make things happen. people. They work together to make things happen. Um, so, um, uh, it's, it's a greater experience to me and I, I hope that the new board, um, can continue, um, work together and, uh, make our school, um, district better and better. Um, and last, uh, I, I would wish everybody, uh, happy and safe, uh, holiday season. Thanks.
Thank you. Shivi?
So I'd like to thank both Yuna as well as Elizabeth for their service and, um, I would, I wish both of them all the very best in the future endeavors. Um, I've known Elizabeth for a very long time, first as a constant at Board of Ed meetings, council meetings, and any other meeting of significance happening anywhere in Edison. Uh, for anyone that knows her, knows one thing, she's diligent and she's thorough. She's extremely hardworking and she's fiercely independent. The only thing that guides her is her knowledge, logic, and care for students and staff. And these are the most important qualities a board member can bring. I've always admired your energy, passion, zeal, uh, and your drive. Um, you've been an asset to the board and knowing you, I know that you will continue to be a constant at Board of Ed meetings. And once again, thank you for your time and thank you for your service, both Elizabeth as well as Yuna.
Thank you. Moeen?
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Dr. Chen and Mrs. Conway for your service. So we saw both of you, you know, sitting on that side, uh, in the audience and, uh, being here on this side, I can totally vouch that it's so difficult. It's so draining, it's so exhausting, but both of you spent three years in this role. Incredible job. Hats off to both of you. Thank you so much for the service to the residents. And, uh, Mrs. Conway, you know, what, uh, a lot of things to learn from you. One of the very important thing is keeping up the energy and passion till at twelve-thirty in the morning with the same commitment, focusing, being attentive, and, you know, making sure you go through every single thing and understand and do the right thing and try to listen. That's a lot of hard work. So we try to learn a lot from you and we hope we don't miss you. We see you over there next, entire next year. So thank you so much, both of you, for your services.
Okay, thank you. Shannon?
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to say big thank you to Elizabeth and Yuna for their service on this board for three years. Um, I have worked with them on several committees, very impressed of how diligently they worked. Still remember for placement criteria of the curriculum committee, those weekly meetings for almost three months, numerous phone calls among us, talking to parents to get all the input. It is only with your dedicated work that the old point system was replaced with a new, more flexible grouping procedure, giving our students more paths to honor classes. And also for every new textbook and programs piloting our programs, in our schools, they have done a lot of research on the subject, getting feedback from teachers and students. With their helps on curriculum committee and of course with the great work of our administration team, the new GNT program is adapting our elementary school. New computer science courses were opened in our middle school and more AP classes will be available to every grade in our high school. There is just too many things to list. Let me just say, um, the committee's goal is to provide the high achievers of our district with more advanced opportunities and give the challenged students the help they needed. And Elizabeth, Yuna, both made critical contributions to help us stay focused on that goal. I'm really grateful for the tremendous work that both of them put into this board, especially on the curriculum committee. Elizabeth's experience as a retired teacher certainly helps and Yuna with a full-time job and a child in our school, her industry experience and the firsthand information from school are definitely a bonus to us. And I know how hard it is to work full-time and take care of families and work voluntarily for this, for this board. I truly appreciate your time and effort for the last, past three years and now no more weekend or late phone calls about the curriculum. Enjoy your time off. Wish you the best luck, best of the luck and we will all miss you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mohan?
What a year. First and foremost, I want to thank, a great thank you to all the board members, the students, the administrators, teachers, parents, and the taxpayers for working together as one team. Getting through this year was a challenge with the pandemic and its variants at our heels every step of the way, hybrid remote learning, transportation issues in the beginning, Hurricane Ida, uh, and the overall overcrowding issue that continues to haunt us. First and foremost, I want to thank you so much for basically giving me so much more knowledge when you were in all our committees and working together and the questions you asked were profound and we're basically going and diving into a lot of issues and I thank you for that. That's something that I'm gonna learn a lot more from. And Dr. Yuna Chen as well, thank you so much for your service as well. And this is a, this is a thankless job, right? But it is something that we do because we are dedicated to our students. We are dedicated to our teachers. We are dedicated to our parents and the taxpayers. And we do it for that sole purpose alone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So I just want to add, uh, echo a lot of the comments made by the board members, um, towards Elizabeth and Dr. Chen. Um, Elizabeth has been, you know, um, been leading the finance facility committee last year and, uh, she's been on the FF committee this year. And so is Dr. Chen this year on the FFF committee. So, um, they served on a lot of other committees, but I just want to concentrate on this year what they have accomplished. Uh, without their help, we will not be able to achieve a zero percent, uh, increase on tax. And the, we will, without their help, we will not be able to have our budget to, uh, move the entire extra state aid into the capital reserve. Um, they have been instrumental in supporting the change of the insurance, uh, to self-insure, save four million, five million dollars on premium and we're on track to gain another five million dollars. The acquisition of our Savior Church, uh, is the final step, is one of the final steps we'll have to have a full-day kindergarten and pre-K. And, uh, they also supported, uh, the proposal this year to, um, use the, the rubber roof on two of the three buildings and, uh, reducing the cost from, uh, thirty dollars to nineteen bucks in order to, um, keep within the two million dollar budget. Um, they are, uh, extremely supportive in hiring a new architect and that reduced our architect fee from five point seven percent last year to this year, uh, to, to five percent this year. And, uh, you know, we were able to make some changes to the roofing services, uh, reducing payment to a, um, a vendor that we paid a hundred seventy thousand dollars and a hundred forty, uh, thousand dollars in the past couple of years. And, uh, we just heard the cricket fields in Woodrow Wilson and in TJ, um, they're extremely supportive on that. And the last is, you know, the, um, proposal to have our own bus fleet of thirty buses that will have a long-term impact to our budget, uh, saving on that. So Elizabeth and I have not, uh, on the same page on a lot of issues, but I respect, uh, her, uh, her opinions. She's very, um, detail-oriented and, um, you know, um, she, she spends a lot of time to check all the bills and stuff and then questioning our administration. Uh, Dr. Yuna Chen is, um, probably the smartest and the nicest woman I ever met, um, although she does not speak that much, uh, at the public meetings, but, uh, I get phone calls a lot over the weekend and, uh, in the evenings and especially we have items that needs to be discussed. Um, you know, uh, I need to pass Dr. Yuna Chen first before I, you know, I can go, uh, somewhere. So, um, I'm gonna really miss both of them and I thank them for the past three years, uh, the, uh, the volunteer service, a thankless job. And Elizabeth, I know you, uh, you will not be a stranger and I hope to see you more on this side of the, the aisle. And I do not agree, this is a cheap sheet. I, I don't agree with, uh, you know, Sue. Uh, that's actually, to me, that's a most, a priceless seat that we need from the parents to provide us, uh, input, uh, with Elizabeth who, uh, has worked on both sides. And, um, I'm looking forward to hear more from her. Um, I'm gonna miss both of you. Thank you for your service. All right.
Jerry, there was something else I wanted to add.
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't want to bring this up before. Um, so I just had a question about something I saw on, on our website and this is for you, Dr. Bregan. I saw a request for proposal for an energy savings company and it says that the proposals need to be addressed to the architect. I'm wondering why the bids are not being received by you and going to the architect?
Great. The energy savings investment plan is being oversold, oversought by DMR. So they're gonna take those and they're gonna bring this to us at the finance committee. They're, they're just opening them and getting them. They're not going to evaluate whether those bids are awarded or not. Um, DMR architects is, was appointed to oversee the ESIP program. So that's why they were directed to them.
But, but did, when did we assign it to the DMR architects?
They've not assigned anything to them. I'm sorry? We haven't assigned anything to them. They're just. Yeah, they're architect of record and, you know, they've committed to overseeing it. It was done at a finance and facilities committee meeting, I guess, but we approved the DMR as an architect of record as well as USA. So they were assigned the task of doing the ESIP. We didn't have to have another board resolution or appoint them because they are an architect of record. So the ESIP program was what they were overseeing and putting that together. So the RFPs were gonna go to them. They were gonna organize them and then bring them back to us. At, at a finance and facilities committee meeting, I forget the deadline off the top of my head.
Okay, because I just thought that the bids were generally, uh, received by the board secretary and not by the, uh, you know, any outside entity. Just my question, that's all.
It's a great question and you're right. Most of the bids come directly back to us. For example, if there was a bid on busing routes, right? Or if there was a bid on companies that would do roof repairs, we would get those, we would open them, we would work with our maintenance and our facilities director, Mr. Colleybus, and we would award those ourselves. The ESIP project is specific about our buildings and the energy enhancements that they can do and the architects oversee that because they have an expertise in mechanicals that we do not. It's typical that an architect would oversee.
So just a follow-up question, but bids typically we, um, we take the lowest bid, right?
Correct.
So then how does it matter if, you know, if they have expertise in mechanicals or don't have expertise?
It's a great question. You know, the, and what would matter is their expertise in the mechanicals to make sure the specifications are adhered to and some of the technical knowledge that I don't have and nor does Mr. Colleybus to make those distinctions. But again, that's not something that's done in isolation. They would bring their summary and their reports to the finance and facilities committee meetings to discuss. Before we awarded any of those, it would obviously be a board vote and discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Jerry?
Yes, go ahead.
Just one more thing. I just want to say, sitting up here, I feel like, you know, I was dead and people were talking about my, uh, internment. And I just, uh, want to say that that is absolutely not the case. Um, the years twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, as Mohan has said, have been very difficult years. And I just want to say that I'm not going anywhere and I invite as many community-based people, parents, staff, to come and be a part of the group that hears what's going on in our district and is able to give their opinions because we are a very big district and we should be able to reach out to our board with any questions that we need to ask. So I invite everyone to join me and they're not cheap seats.
They're not.
We are paying the bills, boy, uh, men and women. Thank you.
Okay. Um, anybody else? All right. So I do have a, a couple of questions for Dr. Bregan because I, I didn't see the parents who, uh, was gonna support us the questions here. So I'm gonna ask on behalf of the parent. One is the, um, extended, uh, absence, uh, with the concerns of the COVID. Uh, some of the parents will, uh, want to see if we can, uh, um, provide a little, some extra, uh, the, uh, excuse absence. That's question number one. And the second question is, um, we have seen, um, some of the, um, fights and, and things that's happening in some of our schools. And, uh, Dr. Bregan, if you can share with the, um, uh, the community, what are the things that we are planning to do to tackle that issue? I would appreciate that. Uh, so those are the two, um, two questions.
Okay, great. Uh, board presidency, only two tonight?
Yes. I might come up with a third one, so it depends on your, your answer.
Must be the Christmas season.
Yeah.
Regarding the absences, obviously during, as many people have mentioned, and, and I, I echo to our, um, the thoughts for our two board members that are departing, you know, um, they do all this hard work and dedicate all this time and they really do it out of the kindness of their heart and for the right reasons to try to make the school district better. And Dr. Chen as well as, uh, Mrs. Conway, I thank you personally for your service. You guys were board members when you appointed me as superintendent. Hopefully you don't regret that a couple of years out, but I appreciate it and I'm, I'm a better superintendent for having worked with both of you. So thank you. Um, regarding the absences, uh, as we said, during this time, it's been a difficult year. Everybody echoed that regarding the pandemic and its lasting impact still. And we encourage people, if they don't feel good, right, if they're, um, think they may be suspected of having, uh, COVID or any other virus, to stay home. And perhaps there are times when they would stay home, um, more frequently this year than in a traditional year. So anyone that exceeds the absences that are permitted, um, please notice the appeal process that's in place and they will be very lenient in understanding. Should they have been quarantined or they were sick and they thought they were suspected of having COVID and that is the days that put them over. We don't want to make a blanket statement that says we're gonna waive everybody because then students, unfortunately, some would take advantage of that. Not many, but I'm sure there's a some. So please, um, assure any parents that have concerns that their child was absent due to COVID, due to quarantining, or a suspicion of maybe being ill and they erred on the side of caution, which we encourage them to do. If those dates put them over the absences that are permitted, please file an appeal. Our principals and our administrators are very aware that appeal process will be very liberal and we take that into consideration to look at the overall safety of the school. Um, regarding the fights and things, I think I mentioned at the last board meeting, we do have some students and some, many students that are struggling this year with a lot of different reasons. Uh, many have been out of, there's almost seventy-five percent of our students, uh, attended school remotely for almost a year and a half. And, uh, they're not acclimated to schools and they're having, they're struggling. academically, some students are struggling, especially our younger students, kindergarten and first grade, those critical learning years when you're learning, uh, the sight-sound association phonemic awareness, grapheme awareness, and learning how to read and write. And we're doing all we can to catch them up. But some of the other skills that we're missing during those primary grades and those transitional grades in middle school and high school are how do you get along and manage in a building with thousands of other people? And they're struggling and we're having some increased, uh, maladaptive behaviors, some increases in altercations between students. So just one of the things of the many that we're doing is we're, we're gonna put out for a district-wide counselor's positions, additional counselors. And their mission, we talked about it at the personnel committee meeting, I believe it was yesterday, is really to be proactive and instilling children the skills and capabilities to successfully resolve conflicts before they need to resort to violence. Because once they go down that path, you know, it's really difficult to bring them back. And of course, we have the practices and the policies in place to be reactive. After an incident happens, we're trying to be proactive and initiate programs and try to do something a little bit differently in these two counseling positions. And we're gonna go where the schools are most in need at that time, where students are having more behavioral infractions than they typically would. And really, um, go full force and try to put in programs, uh, via, via training, via being on-site, working with student leaders, and really trying to get children to understand that when there's a conflict, that's an opportunity for growth and doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, an outcome that re- results in a violent interaction. So we're hopeful, we're working hard, as the board has charged me, to try to do things differently to improve it. And this is just one minor thing that we're doing along those lines. Mr. Shi?
And, uh, how about the parent seminar that was scheduled?
See, I knew there would be a follow-up question.
That was supposed to be part of your answer. You missed it.
That's true. Mr. Shi did ask this a while ago. Um, we're working with our path counselors. You know, we have a great association with Rutgers University and their behavioral health, um, clinicians that work in our schools as well as our supervisory team. And I, I reached out to them, uh, you know, we talked about it a few weeks ago, putting together a form for our parents on how to help our children that are struggling, both academically, emotionally, um, socially, and some things and behaviors, one to watch for and things that they could do to help support them in the home environment. We were all set to go this week, but we decided this probably wasn't the best week for families and parents, you know, with the holidays coming up. So we're gonna do it in, I, I don't know if we have the exact date, but somewhere in mid-January, more parents have availability. Hopefully there'll be no snow at that point. And we're gonna have that parent clinic to try to help our parents as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side? See none, we're open up for public comments. So six minutes, your name and address. Okay, the gentleman, yeah, you.
Jim Kelly, Route 27. I worked...
Can you do me a favor? Can you make this a little bit higher?
Pardon me?
Make this a little higher so we can hear.
The microphone, so we're having trouble hearing you. If you could raise the microphone up.
Just raise the microphone a little bit so you... Yeah. There you go. Thank you.
Jim Kelly, from Route 27. I worked in TJ for 25 years. I wanted to compliment the orchestra at TJ this, we went to the winter concert, and it was fantastic. The, they didn't, they only had one microphone, so you could not hear the chorus. When I was there, they had three or four microphones set up, and you could hear the chorus and everything going. The main reason I came to tonight's meeting is about the school calendar. Why did you eliminate Veterans Day from the calendar? It used to be one of the biggest holidays in the school calendar. And TJ had unbelievable ceremonies for the veterans either just before or just after Veterans Day. Now it's completely ignored. I contacted, I went to the board office and contacted Dr. Bregan, but he wasn't there. I sent an email to him and an email to the board president, and no reply on what they're intending to do. And I think if you're gonna continue not to have Veterans Day on the calendar or as a day off, it's a shot at the veterans.
Thank you. Now, you wanna answer that question?
Yeah, thank you. Hey, Mr. Kelly, I appreciate your comments, and I apologize if I didn't get back to you. If that ever happens, please call again and email me. I try to get back to people pretty regularly, so my apologies on that. The school calendar is always a difficult time when we go over the days. There's 180 days that we have to be in session. And we try to accommodate, you know, as many different holidays as we can. And sometimes it's more difficult than others depending on the calendar. One of the discussions about Veterans Day, though, was for children, it's been our experience, and what happened at Lindenall School this year, as some of the board members commented at a previous meeting as an example, for children especially, sometimes it's more valuable for them to be in the room, to be in the classroom, and have some of the presentations. Well, we do bring in some veterans across different time spans and different combat situations where they may have served in different areas, and have the children to have an opportunity to interact with those veterans at that time. You talked about Thomas Jefferson. I missed...
It was completely ignored this year.
Yeah, understood. I'm saying it about maybe that school. I will follow up on that. But it wasn't ignored district-wide. And the opportunity for classroom activities to occur, where we recognize and honor the sacrifices our veterans made. I remember Thomas Jefferson and Mr. Capatchu was there. And they have the helicopter land on the back of the field, and he did this extraordinary event. And I'm sure you remember that, too. That's why you're saying that. I will follow up with our principals, though, if we are in session during that time. The expectation is we honor and recognize our veterans for the services they provided to us personally in our country, because without them, we wouldn't be here. So we're on the same page. We'll see what we can do for the calendar moving forward.
And I think, try to get more microphones for the school.
Got that noted down, absolutely, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you. Venkatesh.
Good evening, everyone. Venkatesh Bundy. I would like to thank Conway and Dr. Chen. And Conway already spoke to you a couple of meetings back, that how much you missed. And in fact, I don't mind saying that it's a shame that the residents didn't vote for you, having your experience, having your other stuff. And I also don't want to undermine Dr. Chen's contributions, which Shannon had clearly mentioned, her contributions to the curriculum committee. I think, Dr. Chen, many parents or many residents may not be knowing you having a PhD degree from U Chicago, and the kind of contributions that you made to help many students get into the honors is not something that we forget. And we thank you for being part of that curriculum committee and your contributions. Having said that, one simple observation, there used to be six women in the BOE. I think starting January, it will be only four. So the woman becoming minority, which I don't like, nothing against Brian and Doug, but obviously, woman is gonna be a minority on this board. And thank you, Mr. Shi, for bringing those three questions, which allows me to give my other questions. Dr. Bregan, those excused absences, three, which I brought it up around a month back, the reason that I think you guys need to give a serious thought about it is one of the parent has already consumed three of those excused absences because his kid not contracted COVID but having a cough and cold. But now, last week, they sent the kid to the school because they don't want to take a risk. So now, if the fourth time, if they send the kid and you don't increase that three to five or six exceded absences, so you'll be seeing the six students being forced to send to school by those parents. I think we should be able to avoid and accommodate certain things. So I know that there will be some misuse of the parents that you guys need to worry, but I think if you guys can give some preference to that and at least make an announcement in a week or two, that would be really great. And the second thing is, I don't know whether it is the right time to do it, but you guys need to think about the TikTok, the gun issue that came up. The entire country was panicked, the schools. And not only a lot of parents didn't send the kids to the school on that day, and I also observed some teachers didn't show up. So I don't think elementary and middle schools will have a challenge. But in the near term, I think Mr. Shi and your board has to think about putting some thought leadership on it that, because we don't have enough police to cover both high schools. So do you have enough infrastructure that will be ready, enough person will be ready to detect metal detectors and all that stuff? So I'm not saying that guns are, at least touchwood, Edison seems to be bit safe, but we never know that one wrong person can really mess up our thing. I think the metal detectors and all that stuff may be a lot of infrastructure cost, but I think you guys might need to be ready to invest as and when the threat becomes prevalent. So it's only a recommendation because we don't want to regret after any year or after six months that we should have thought about it. And this is personal to me, that I came from the West Coast. We always used to have two to three weeks of Christmas vacation. And all the colleges have Christmas vacation. All the siblings are coming from colleges, but the younger siblings are only having a week vacation. So the American way of living, that's what I'm told the dream is, the summer holidays and the Christmas holidays. And I think with so much diversified town, we are giving lot of regional, country-wise holidays. But I have one observation there. We, I found three or four holidays that are coming in an isolated Wednesday, which is not helping the parents and which is not helping students. Why do we need to have a holiday on Fridays? Oh, sorry, Wednesdays are Tuesdays, which is not combined with a long weekend. If you guys can think, you guys may not agree, because obviously, you have more responsibility of meeting the demands of various cultures and various diversified parents, but I think Christmas holidays should be two weeks on par with other states. I don't know whether it is feasible or not, just a thought for you guys. And if you look back from the last year, the foot change vendor, the Lincoln School updates, the cricket grounds, the new fundings, that esports that has been introduced in Edison High School, I think a lot's happening. I think I would like to ask the new board to think about it. I think, I haven't seen a wedge between the North and South in the last two, three years, but slowly after this election, I think the North and South wedge is becoming bigger. Don't know who is creating it. Was it politically motivated? I just want to advise and warn the new board to keep an eye, to avoid using the North and South language at new meetings. Obviously, all schools are important. I have came here, even though I'm, my son is not in the high school. I requested Principal Ross to improve the EHS rating to help us, and which is doing a great job. So if EHS is not doing it and JP is doing good, doesn't matter. If JP is not doing good and EHS is doing well, doesn't matter. At the end of the net-net, Edison is coming down from the entire NJ level. So I think we should work both of them at the same level. I think we should help to parents and students to understand that both schools are on par, and people should not prefer that the other school is better than this school. So thank you.
Thank you.
Venkatesh, you always provide rational comments, so I appreciate that. You know, you raised some good points about the communicating, about the excused absences. I appreciate that. The TikTok gun challenge was frightening for all of us. I'm sure anyone who has parents or works with schools understands it. You know, if it was up to me, I'd blow up all that social media and get rid of it. But, you know, unfortunately, that's the world our children live in. And, you know, we were in close contact with the police that day. And it was also the New Jersey State Police Rocks sent out a notification that there were no credible threats associated with it, but it's still frightening for all of us, especially in today's day and age. I will talk to the board about, you know, the possibility of metal detectors. We'll look into that. There's pluses and minuses to that. Some districts have it, some districts don't. And we'll have, that's a board discussion that we will definitely have. That's not my decision, and we will talk about that. Regarding Christmas vacation for two weeks, Venkatesh, I'm with you. I'll take two weeks. But looking at the calendar overall, we have, we created the calendar for three years in a row last year. So I think we have one more year on this calendar, and we've tried to do it in those cycles. So when it comes up again, we'll make sure we take all that into consideration. At the end of the day, you have to go 180 days. That's the minimum from the state requirements. How those days are delineated out, no matter how we do it, we recognize, having been in this business for a little bit of time, we're gonna, we're gonna make somebody unhappy. So we try to come to a middle ground where we upset the least amount of people. But point's well taken, and we'll take a look at all that. So thank you.
Okay. Here's a lady in the back.
Good evening. I'm Penny Montana, 1134 Waterford Drive. I'm commenting on Dr. Chen's AB schedule possibility for the middle school. It's, just as a teacher of music for the past 23 years, I think it would be detrimental to our music program, our arts programs, our world language program, to have kids only on a semester program. They truly need the continuity every, even if it's not every day, throughout the whole school year. A deficit of possibly more than six months, if they finish in June and they don't start up again until January, there's just gonna be so much knowledge lost during that time. The performances that we had after remote learning were wonderful. However, they were very difficult to get to the caliber that they were at. I know my students had their concert last Thursday. My daughter Haley, who's here, had her concert with Mr. Listner this past week, and they were wonderful. But they were tough to get to that. And I think if you're gonna consider that, just make sure, whatever you consider, it's something where the students have contact with their teachers throughout the school year, not on a pull-out basis, but as a class, and something where they're seeing it on their teachers on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Just on that, Patty, it's not Dr. Chen's schedule. I just want to clarify that. You know, there was something that was brought up at the curriculum committee to be discussed and to be looked at. Make sure you share that feedback, though, with your principal and with your supervisors. You know, we want to input from the teachers. Obviously, they're the ones that work with the students the most closely on a regular basis. And there's some pluses and minuses to both schedules. And at some point, you know, you have to try to weigh what's best and what's in the best interest of the children. And some of those, the AB schedule has benefits and deficits, and a semester schedule has benefits and deficits, too. I'm sure the board, when we get to that point, we make a decision, we'll weigh in on all that. And we're in this phase right now of gathering information. So please share that with your building-level administration and your supervisors. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Tony?
Tony DiBresquale, Dupont Street. With the new variant that they have and all the numbers going up and stuff like that, I know some schools have decided to go remote. And I'm just wondering, at this point, is there any consideration that in January, because of the holidays and kids being with the families and all that, do you think there will be any consideration of the district going remote? And what would be the criteria for that to happen? Or is it only based on, like, if the kids are in school and based on the numbers actually in our district? You know, what is the whole basis for possibly if we did go remote in January? Because again, you know, things I do know are getting bad. I also want to thank Dr. Chen and Ms. Conway for the great work you guys have done. I know it's difficult, and the time you have to put into the board, it's a lot, and it's a big commitment. And we definitely need to honor those that do put their time in to the board and helping our children. So I want to thank you both for that, and all the board members for the whole year, the time you've all taken out to, you know, do for our kids. And, you know, just appreciate that. And then I just have one last question. I know it's been asked a few times, but I think it was asked probably about two months ago, but there was an IT study, and the response when somebody asked about it was, well, we can't give it out yet because it hasn't been told to the board. The results haven't been told to the board yet. And I'm just wondering, I'm guessing this was done, I don't know, in the spring and the winter? I don't remember, you know, when it was mentioned. But I'm just wondering how long it takes for the results? If you have the results? Have they been told to the board? Do I need to Oprah that for me to get a copy of that? Will I be able to get a copy of that if I do request it? So that's all the questions I have, and have a great holiday. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Remote criteria, IT study.
Regarding the school going remote in the number of cases, obviously, we're aware that the Omicron variant has been more, spreading more rapidly within the community, within the nation, right, as it's migrated over the pond to the United States. The cases so far, if we look at last week's cases in the district that were reported where we had positive COVID cases, it was 45 cases. Now, while that's more than we've had, you know, in weeks past, some weeks we had as low as four or five, some weeks 12, 45 was the highest week at this point. And it still reflects less than one quarter of 1% of our staff and students. One quarter of 1%. We have about 16,500 students enrolled in the district currently, over 2,000 employees. And while anyone that's sick or anyone that was impacted by the disease, for them personally, it's a significant issue. When we look at the bigger pictures, should that low percentage necessitate us closing the school? At this point, if you asked me, I would say no. We will monitor it and see how things goes, see how things progress. We do have conversations with my colleagues. We meet every Wednesday morning via Zoom for the 25 districts in Middlesex County. I was on conversation before this with the superintendent from Woodbridge Township. They're comparable in size to us. They have a few more cases than we do, and they're not looking at going remote or closing either. But we'll take all that into consideration. I don't know how things are gonna progress. We don't know that. We evaluate it regularly. Dr. Adorelli takes the lead with the issues that are related to our cases and with COVID, and he's in constant communication. We're fortunate in Edison to have our own Department of Health. Other districts have to rely on the county Department of Health. And working with them, we'll make that decision moving forward. It's not something we'll do lightly, but it is something that we try to take everything into consideration, health and safety of the students, and the impact of them being totally remote. We know, we know without question, totally remote, as great as our teachers and administrators did in trying to implement a program successfully and with fidelity, it pales in comparison to being in person. We know that. We're seeing it. We're seeing the impact I mentioned a little bit earlier about some of the maladaptive behaviors. So it's not something we want to do lightly. It's not something we want to do unless it's absolutely necessary. So we're weighing all those factors in, and we'll keep you posted. Regarding the IT study, I forget where we left off with that information. We shared it with our board and our committees. We made some internal decisions on what we were doing. We'll look into that if that's for public consumption. I don't know if that's an overable document, but I'll take a look at that, and I will get back to you personally tomorrow, Mr. DiBresquale.
Maria Orchid, 83 Jefferson. My first point was to discuss how is the Edison schools are dealing with the mental health issues? What are young students going through, any drug addictions? The social and emotional learning of coming back into schools? The adjustments of being back into schools? And in the sad cases, if there's a death of a loved one? And in, in the sad cases, if there's a death of a loved one? Is there regressions from the students not being in schools? And how are we handling that? Just a follow-up for the traffic study for the light of the Boulevard of Eagles and Opost Road? Just wondering how that's coming along? Thank you to Elizabeth Conway and Dr. Chen for your years of service. You have helped this community. A question about the Stelton School with the architects. Will the facade be left alone? It's just the interiors that are going to be worked on? And I'd like to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. I appreciate that. The mental health issues are something that's a significant concern for us, and when we planned for the return in September over the summer, we did put, we did put in place additional supports with our counselors. We had trainings for those and our teachers to be more cognizant and maybe recognize some more students that are in distress. I know our path counselors were actively engaged in cla, in classrooms and trying to be proactive to help students and to, again, identify those who are in crisis. We have had more students with mental health issues that we've recognized. We, we do. This pandemic's effect is still going on. Our children are still struggling to get back to some degree of normalcy, as all are we. Had a conversation today, and I said something like, "I can't, I hope next September we're back to normal." That's like the third September I've referenced where we, we talked at. We didn't think this would be ongoing as long as it is, right? But it is, and it's something we have to deal with. As Mr. De Pasquale mentioned, you know, we're still thinking about maybe we may have to close at some point. We thought that was in the rearview mirror a couple of months ago. It's a frightening time, and I'm 56-years-old, and if I worry about these things, what are our eight-year-olds thinking about, right? What are our 12- and 14-year-olds? They have enough on their plate to worry about just their body changing and becoming, you know, adults and developing in school and being academicians and where they're going to college and who's their boyfriend, their girlfriend, and my calculus test and all that. And add to that whether, you know, I'm gonna get Omicron variant and pass away, right? It's traumatic for our kids. So we're realizing that, we're sensing that, we're seeing that, we're seeing it on a daily basis. I wish I had good news for you, Maria, and could say, "No, everything's hunky-dory. We fixed everybody, and everybody's perfect." That's not the case. There's ongoing issues. As Mr. She said, we're gonna have that parent training in January to try to help us to provide some skills to be proactive and, and observe some maybe triggers and some signals that we observe in, in our children so we could help them. But this is tough on them. It's tough. It's tough on our teachers. They're exhausted. They can't wait for Christmas, you know? And even, you know, the people that don't celebrate Christmas. It's a break. They get a chance to breathe. This has been an exhausting year for everyone, and, you know, I talked about it on the meeting on, last Thursday. There's a substitute shortage. We've raised the prices for subs. Other districts have raised it significantly. The money's not the issue. The people aren't there. So then our teachers have to fill in when someone's absent. You know, they normally have, you know, a time to get their lunch and prepare their lessons and relax maybe for a little bit in between. They don't have that anymore. And, yeah, they're getting a little bit extra compensation for that, but their day is now longer and more exhausting. And we're seeing that on a regular basis. The one month, I think I said in October, I think we had 4,931 coverages, periods, and, you know, that's humongous. That equated to 40 substitutes a day that weren't covered. That's a lot of work for our teachers, so this is impacting everybody. So we, we feel it, we're trying to be as sensitive and do the best we can, but I've asked teachers, "What can we do to support you? What can we do?" They look at me like, "Ah, give me dime off?" Well, that would make more subs, right? So I hope everybody gets a chance during this winter break to de- family and just forget about life for a little bit. The light on Opost and Boulevard of Eagles, we talked about that at the Liaison Committee. I don't think that's moving anywhere right now, but we'll revisit that again. Anyone that's here during that time of day, we recognize that traffic. And the Stelton Road, that's just preliminary conversations. I think the board would make that decision. We don't really know the exact numbers, as Mrs. White said, it was just preliminary. I think anyone that's been around this town for a period of time should recognize the historical significance of that, that facade out front, and, you know, it's beautiful architecture, and if that could be, if that, if we could keep that, we would, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Manesh?
Manesh Patel, 241 Menef. First of all, Dr. Bregan, I'll ask a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
One of them is, she just, Ms. Pang just said something about curriculum, changing her books, changing new studies. Are you talking to directors, principals, or teachers who are teaching the kids? Or are you guys just deciding on your own what to teach? Because time after time, some of the changes that you're making, kids are complaining at home, because somebody just made a big phone call today saying, "Uncle, we got problems at school. You better go to the BOE meeting." You are gonna change something without asking teachers or directors? And when the kids find out, they panic. Come on, at this time, we don't need panics in the kids' mind what's gonna be changed tomorrow. You know, you guys are here to help the kids. And when you change something that affect kids, where is the kids gonna go? Not every parent's gonna listen. You know what they say? Go talk to your principal. Well, principals don't have time to talk to 600, 700 kids. I will call you tomorrow and make it personal phone call for this to tell you what the project I was talking about. I don't wanna make it public today, but it's something everybody should understand, because she just said, and Ms. Conway asked the question, "Did you do the meetings?" And answer is no. You didn't talk to the teachers, you didn't talk to directors, you didn't do the meetings, and you did it. Second thing, JP Stevens is one of the biggest problem we have when it comes to traffic for years and years. JP Stevens has seven streets that can be opened up where a little bit of traffic can move off to New Dover or the side streets on both ends. Did anybody talk about it? No. The best person you could talk to is Ms. Pete. She's been a principal there for many years, and she could give you that advice, I don't think you'd talk to her either. I don't think you guys would. One phone call to her to say, "Do you have an input in this? Why don't you talk to the current principal, current assistant principal?" These are the things. You just said a few minutes ago, "I hope the board is not," well, I don't want to use the word, "they're happy with you." We're doing, we're doing meetings here. Look at the lights in Edison. I won't talk about JP today, I'll talk about Edison today, because my buddy Venkat says, "Don't do north and south." Look at the lights here. You're sitting here once a month or maybe twice a month in this auditorium, and nobody paid attention to the lights? This is where our kids study. Your architect tell you about solar panels, the roof panels, outside grass? They have all the ideas. What the hell are they doing here? They never come inside? So are they choosing what they want to make money on and giving it directly to you instead of the board? Doctor, this is serious allegation, and I'm making it today, because I just found out on two sides, and it's from your own board. The third thing I will talk about is, every school has a problem of traffic. It happened not too long ago on 23rd, 23 condos. You look at JP Stevens, you look at this school, you look at James Madison. Are you talking to transportation? Not our transportation, but Mayor's Transportation Department? Maybe widening the roads so there's a special lane to make turns? And it's a longer lane, not only four cars, which lacks of James Madison, JMP, you know, Woodrow Wilson? I could give you plenty of schools, and I don't travel there every day, but time to time, I do end up up there. And I see this repeatedly, that we have this issue. But everybody talking about, "We'll do it, it goes to the next board." And this is the ninth board that we're talking about JP's transportation issue. Thank you, Ms. Conway, for hard work, and we'll work together on this side of the bench. It'll be a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board President, can I respond to a few things?
Yes, yes.
And, Manesh, I hope you do call me, and we get a chance to sit down and, and discuss whatever that specific concern is. Regarding some of the other more global ones, you know, when we do the curriculum, the board doesn't decide that, nor does myself independently or the Curriculum Committee. It's done, it's done with input from the teachers, from the supervisors, from the principals, and the curriculum is written by the teachers. The teachers write the curriculum. So they're involved in the process from the beginning to the end. Is every teacher involved? No. It's the ones that volunteer that want to participate and step forward and take that initiative. So the, the idea that somehow that's from the top down, it's not accurate, and I'd love to sit down with you and go over that and share with you. If there's a specific thing you spoke about, I, please, call me, we'll talk about it. JP Stevens traffic, and the traffic throughout the district, we, we do work with the Mayor's Office. Mrs. White has worked really hard with the Liaison Committee in getting an ongoing dialogue with the Mayor's Office that we hope will continue with the change in mayor. The mayor-elect has been at these meetings on, you know, a regular basis as well, so we look forward to that. And as we said, we were working with the police and the traffic, police officers and Sergeant Turner, and addressing the things at JP. And the seven streets, we, we talked about that. That's a township issue. We can't do that, but we would request. We talked about having Floyd open more regularly and some of those other side streets. There are some parameters, not just related to the residents there, but the wetlands. I know nobody wants to hear that, but that JP Stevens is surrounded by wetlands. Even the expansion of a parking lot is an issue there because of that. But those are things that we are definitely talking to people and working on. And, Manesh, I want to thank you for bringing up the point about this auditorium, because this board sitting here, these nine people, have voted for and decided to spend a significant amount of money to renovate this. So next year, when you're sitting here, these will be new seats, new lights. Look up, these lights, brand new. Stage will be renovated, and it'll be a quality place with new HVAC as well to provide at least a large area for air conditioning, as with the cafeteria in this building. So this board is attending to issues and things. You did make an assertion that somehow the architect gave me money directly? That's personally-
You didn't say money.
You did say money.
I didn't say money.
You said, "Giving me money."
I didn't say money.
No, you said, "Giving me money," directly is what you said. We could watch the video, and I assure you, that's not happening anywhere. The only one that gives me any money is the Board of Education through the contract, and I hope I provide a service that's worthy of it, and I try my best to do that. I think I hit on all those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I said to spend the money.
Thank you.
To be directly to spend the money.
Excuse me, excuse me. You know the Joe, okay? Do we have any other, other? Yes. Any first timers? Any first timers? Yeah.
I think, Dr. Bregan, last night, in a couple of our groups, a lot of parents has raised the concerns about the grading, which Shannon and Jerry has brought it up. But then I realized, I don't want to be the odd man out saying that, "No, that's not happening." But then I realized that how much fortunate that my kids are to study in John Adams, and I wrote a lengthy note late last night to Dr. Valentine, that the kind of issues that the grading, quizzes are not graded, tests are not graded, and all the stuff, if I look back, how much fortunate that we have a math teacher, her name is Ms. Kramer. She used to send three days before the test to the parents that, "This is what we have learned, 3.1, 3.2, 3.3. The quiz is graded this and given to the students. We walk them through this." And next Wednesday is the test, this mail comes on Friday to us. Monday morning, 8 o'clock, I'm in my room. The kids can come in and actually ask the questions. So she makes herself available in the morning. She actually grades everything, and the tests are not given to the students back home because they wanted to use it to the next year, but the teacher actually makes the kids to write those answers and the mistakes in the yellow paper. That my daughter writes that, "Oh, I made this mistake, I overlooked it, and how I will not be repeating it." Then the parent has to sign it. So if I say this on those WhatsApp and Facebook forms, the parents will jump on me. But I ended up thanking Valentine about that teacher, and I think the supervisors should look at such kind of teachers and the practices that they follow. I think a lot of honors kids in the mass are not getting good scores on CNDs, but I can assure you that if you look at Mrs. Kramer's classes, I think people are doing much better. The same thing with, I learned about Spanish teacher, that she reviews the work by 5:00, and at night, 9:00, she sends a notice. Her name is Señorita Finnucan. She actually sends a note at 9:00 as a reminder, "You completed only 75%, you missed this 25%." How many teachers really go even in private schools to review the homework that was due next day morning at 8:30 at night, 9:00? I think maybe out of 1,000 teachers, maybe 5, 10% may not be doing it well, especially in the high schools, but I think your elementary and middle school teachers are doing a fabulous job. I think we have stopped recognizing those things, that your teachers do this, and I think I wrote a lengthy note that how much I'm taking what the middle school jobs is doing, I'm taking as granted. I think I have only 26 minutes, but Jerry, I have one question that SATs. UCLA's eight colleges are not taking it. Howard is not going to consider till 2027, 2028. Lot of IVs are coming in, and I think some of our students are actually failed in mathematics in the BC. The guy is GNT, and I just need five minutes, oh, five seconds. GNT is honors, but the kid is failing in the BC, and the teacher is not communicating with the parent. Teacher didn't actually sat with the student, and the student has to cut down after the marking period one to the honors, instead of going to the BC to the regular honors. I think we are actually harming even at least five, six kids, one, five, six kids, it's not, we're not doing our job. Please pay attention how you can help those high school kids not to drop, and what kind of things that these supervisors, I'm not blaming them, supervisors and COOs should actually pay attention to help those five kids. Sorry for that. Thank you.
Okay. So you asked me about the question about SATs. It's very specific, so we can sit down with Dr. Bregan and, and talk about the specifics of, of that, of the, the SATs. So, you know, that's what I'm gonna say. And I really commend you for appraising the good work our teachers have done, you know, and to, to our principal. And a lot of times, our teachers' extra effort are not being recognized, and I really appreciate what you did with the, the two teachers that, you know, you mentioned, the Spanish teacher and the math teacher. Thank you for doing that. And, you know, they're doing a great work, and especially during this difficult time, we should recognize the great contributions they have made, especially those who went out of their way to help our students, and I, I thank you for, for doing that. Okay? Anybody else?
Yes. Board President, I have a request. It will only be the season of giving if we can give Cristo nine minutes, so he gets his six minutes from previous and three minutes for his rebuttal, as a great gesture as the board. So, Cristo, you have nine minutes if the board agrees.
Thank you very much. I'm fine with six, but if someone speaks after me, I don't mind coming to get my three minutes, as afforded to me by the law. Merry Christmas. I just want to stress, you know, hello lawyer. God bless you all. I love you all. I love you. Where are you, Ms. Conway and Ms. Chen? But it's Christmas season. Let's not forget Jesus Christ. Let's not forget his mother, what she had to endure. She had to watch her child be tortured. So, Dr. Bregan, we see across the United States with Board of Educations, they're at war with the parents. Oftentimes, a lot of parents are going to jail, and I just want to say to the lawyer and to Dr. Bregan, I appreciate the both of you being very professional. I recently went to Metcian Board Education Meeting, where they'll take the governor's executive order and do their own interpretation, just to keep out members of the public they don't like. No, Woodbridge Board of Education, but it was the Metcian Mayor who was the lawyer. Your buddy over there, he's not good enough to help you out on that. Your buddy over there, he's not good enough to help you out on the ethics charges. I'm going to defeat you on that. Let me know if there's an update on that, on your ethics violations. I hope we find a new property to build on, build the school, and not just do an expansion on the north side. We have some members of the public here today who actually threatened me many times with the lawsuit and threatened me physically. How is that, how is that going for you guys? Specifically for exposing you, Mr. Bureau. Jerry, would it be an ethics violation if one of the members of the Board of Education, let's say, one of their friends gets involved in a lawsuit with the teacher here at one of the districts, Dr. Bregan? Would it be unethical for that Board of Education member to, let's say, take this person over to another association, organization with a lot of cash and help this, pay for this person's lawyer, this person being an illegal, an illegal citizen? Do we, does our Board of Education now take sides of illegal citizens or personal friends over the parents, students, and teachers are supposed to look after? Would that be an ethics violation? Well, you're going to answer me after, of course. If that's the case, I think she, Vee, and Bureau, they should do the right thing and remove themselves. Remove yourselves after the reorg meeting. Hopefully, the board can pick two other members that are qualified and will live up to their ethical responsibilities or fiduciary duties, not just do what they want to do and what's best for themselves and their friends. What am I, you know what I'm talking about? Yeah? Two minutes? Huh? All right. Well, I already said, Ms. Chen, you know how much I love you, I appreciate you. You did a lot of good work. I love, I love you the most when you come to library board meetings as a member of the public and give some hell to Sam Joshi. I'm never going to forget about that. He deserved every bit of hell that you gave him. Ms. Conway, I love you, I respect you, defend the, you're there for the special education students, and, you know, probably the only one with integrity, one of the few up there with integrity. I hope, you know, we do what Ms. Beth Maroni did in the past when she had her last chance to bash Jerry. Let's hope you take your last chance, remember, today's your last chance. Bash Jerry, bash Bureau, expose Bureau for what he did during the election season. We know what he tried to do. He was so afraid of you, Ms. Conway, that he did everything in his power to intimidate you, to try to make deals to get you off the ballot, and you still stayed on the ballot. That shows how much integrity you do have. These people, they love to throw any deal, they're like devils, these guys. They'll throw any deal your way until you accept. The fact you didn't accept, I have so much respect for you, the same way I didn't accept their 500, 500 free signs and $2,000, and believe me, I really needed that $2,000, but, you know, it doesn't matter who made that offer. What, are you guilty? Are you guilty? Why are you jumping? Were you the one who made the offer? He was the one who made the offer, but, you know, guilty? Feeling guilty about it?
Cristo, don't engage.
Well, the mall made the offer on your behalf. You were standing a few feet away from him. Will I get the three minutes? We'll see, maybe someone wants a rebuttal.
Okay. Do I need anybody else? Okay. See none? Can I have a motion to close, close public comments?
Motion.
Okay, another second. Okay, Bureau, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
See you guys next year. Have a happy, healthy holiday season. Thank you very much.
Season greetings to everybody.
Stay safe.